With that being said, now I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, January 19th, 2010. At this time, I would invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge. Commissioner Stamey?
Good day, Father Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for every good and perfect gift, Lord, you provide for us. Lord, I just pray a special prayer tonight for the people in Haiti, the citizens there, Lord, and Lord also I pray for all the help that you provide in that area. Lord, I pray for wisdom tonight as each board member, each and every one of the board members make decisions tonight that affect this county. I pray you unite our hearts and our minds. We ask this name in your son's name, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and before I ask for the acceptance of the agenda, we do need to amend that for one item. That item will follow the proclamation, and that is to amend the agenda for an appointment to the Development Authority that would represent District One. And with that said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Is there a motion?
Have a motion by Mr. Jeffries. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda tonight is a proclamation, and for that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Warren Holder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's indeed an honor and a privilege this evening to recognize a person, Billy Carter. And Billy, if you would, come forward to the podium with your family and any of the members on a present or former board that has served with Billy. It's impossible tonight for a proclamation to cover in one small sheet of paper the involvement that Billy has had in Henry County and in Locust Grove in the last 50 years. In Locust Grove, Billy was the go-to person. What do I mean by go-to? If there was a problem, he was the person to go to, whether it be involving city affairs or personal affairs. So many times, he helped people that were in need. He helped people with development. It's just so much. He's been on and off the City Council since the 1950s, about 1957. I don't have the date exactly, but since about 1957. He was also the police chief in Locust Grove for 25 years. He was appointed by the city to the P and Z Board, or the Zoning Advisory Board, as a city appointee. That is one way that Billy was able to serve on the Development Authority and the Zoning Advisory Board simultaneously, because he was a city appointee and then a county appointee to the Development Authority. We're going to cover many things in the proclamation, but a couple of things that are not in and I think we need to talk about. In 1986, outside of his government activities, Billy was elected as potentate of the Arab Temple in Atlanta. Ladies and gentlemen, there's probably more politics than that than is in this room tonight. Also, how many children in this county, either burned or crippled children, have gone to that go-to person for help? To bring into perspective some of the service and what he has been involved in and he has seen evolve and develop in Henry County, go back to the Atlanta Motor Speedway, 1959, '60, planning prior to that. He was a member of the Airport Study Committee. For some of you that hadn't been here too long, you know the second Hartsfield was going to be in Henry County, and there was an Airport Study Committee that was formed to study that. He was on that committee. And when we look around tonight, and some agree and some disagree, and that's life, but when we look at industrial development, and let's stay with the industrial development at this time, look at that 155 corridor, that Highway 42 corridor, the Eagles Landing development, and I'm going to get to that further in a minute, and also the Georgia Three development in Hampton. He has been here through all of it. He's been a part of it. And I talked about Eagles Landing. When Eagles Landing and Calhoun Properties came to Henry County to make application for a planned development, there was nothing in the planning and zoning ordinances that would allow Eagles Landing. So without some ingenuity and working and making things work and making things happen, chances are, ladies and gentlemen, Eagles Landing wouldn't be here today. But it's things like that that I think need recognized. And I will close with this. But he has served on the Development Authority, and that's the real reason for this recognition this evening, is because he's retired from the Development Authority. But I didn't think it could go without saying some of the other things that he's been involved But on the Board of Commissioners, he has served under nine different Commissioners over the last 42 years, and I'm going to name them for you. Some of them you don't know, and some of them may bring back some names that you might not even want to remember. I know we've got one standing out there that I don't think he'll mind his name being mentioned. Started off with Howell Gardner. Some of you may not have realized Howell was a Commissioner at one time. He was on the Water Authority so long, but he was. Jake Lewis, Wilbon Cleveland, Frank Tangle, Bill Gardner, when Bill was the District Commissioner from District One, Roy Keaton, Andy Calhoun, who is here with us tonight, and myself. That's nine different Commissioners that he had to please to stay on that board, and that's quite an array of people in those nine that I just mentioned. And with that, Billy, I want to read this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners thanking you for those many years of service. In appreciation of William L. Billy Carter upon the occasion of his retirement from the Henry County Development Authority, whereas Mr. William L. Billy Carter has served the citizens and administration of Henry County in many roles and through his public service and leadership for over 42 years, and whereas Mr. Carter began his long career with the Henry County Development Authority when it was founded in 1967 and served as its first Vice Chairman before ascending to the role of Chairman in 1968, whereas under Mr. Carter's leadership, the Development Authority has been a catalyst in attracting numerous new businesses to Henry County, including NEC Technologies, Topan InterAmerica, Ford Motor Company, Nestle, Amazon.com, Sunglass Hut International, the Sports Authority, and Whirlpool, as well as the county's first resident higher education facility, the regional academic center for Mercer University. And whereas by working to attract such companies to Henry County, his efforts with the Development Authority have resulted in the creation of more than 5,000 new jobs, over $300 million in investment in industrial revenue bonds, and more than $1 billion in new direct capital investment in the county. Whereas he was the first recipient of the Henry County Chamber of Commerce's Public Service Award, which is now named for him, and in 2007 was recognized Volunteer of the Year by the Georgia Economic Developers Association. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Billy Carter for his extraordinary dedication to the economic development of this community and for providing exceptional service and outstanding leadership to the county and its citizens for more than four decades. Be it further proclaimed, the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes Mr. Carter much happiness and continued good health in the days ahead. Thank you, Billy. Yes, Warren, I'd like to thank all of you for being here, and I certainly want to thank the Commissioners for this. In fact, you reminded me of some of the things I had done. It'd been so long ago, I'd almost forgot them. But I want to thank everybody for being here, and I want them to know that I have enjoyed working for Henry County, and we have worked extremely hard. Billy Carter didn't do this. He's had boards that did this. I had the privilege of leading those boards, but I've had some excellent sidekicks, and it's been a pleasure for me to be involved with it. And I want to thank all of them for being part of this thing for right it party years. Again, let me say thank you so very much, and if I can help you anywhere, please let me know.
Thank you so much.
The Development Authority would like for me to also make an announcement that there is a reception being held in Conference Room B to honor Mr. Carter, and those of you who are here for that are welcome to go on over. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on in the agenda, and the next item is going to be a presentation by Chairman Tom Wertham, Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, it's good to have you here this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Board of Commissioners and Chairman as well. And by the way, Chairman, it's a pleasure serving with you on the Atlanta Regional Commission. Your Chairman serves you well in the region, and I want you to know that. I'm going to be very brief, because I see you have a very lengthy agenda tonight, so I'm here to say thank you on behalf of Douglas County residents and the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. As you are all aware, back in September 21st, Douglas County probably out-hit harder than any county in the state of Georgia when we had 25 inches of rain in a 24-hour period. I assume that's about a 2,000-year flood, and I hope none of us have to live through that again. But Randy Halsey, our DOT Director, wanted to be here with us tonight. We had a sick child, and I did want to read a statement that Randy gave me this afternoon before I left the courthouse. And it stated, "We are indebted to Henry County Board of Commissioners and the Department of Transportation and Stormwater Management staff for all they've done for us. We look at these folks like they are part of our team. They've done a terrific job. God forbid Henry County goes through something like this, but if they do, we stand ready to reciprocate and help them the way they helped us." And I did like what I heard that Commissioner Stamey said, "In a crisis like this, we're not Henry Countyans, we're Douglas Countyans. We're Georgians." And I want to assure you, God forbid it if it ever happens to Henry County, but we're willing and ready to help you out as you did us in our storm. As you know, we had 107 roads out, we had 25 bridges, and we lost lives, seven of our residents during that storm. We made it back very quickly. We lost our water supply for four days, and we still have a half a dozen or so roads and bridges that are out, but we've come a long way. But we could not have done it without the help of our friends here in Henry County. And I have a little token of appreciation. This thing's heavy, I barely could pick it up. But this is a token of appreciation from Douglas County, and it reads, "We get by with a little help from our friends. Thank you, Henry County Board of Commissioners, September 2009 floods." And Chairman, could I bring that up to you?
Certainly. Why don't you meet us over here for a photograph? Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'd also like to take an opportunity to mention some special guests that we have here with us this evening, and that's Boy Scout Troop 99, is that correct? And they're here from Salem Baptist Church, and if you'd like to stand so we can recognize you. Thank you so much. It's a privilege and an honor. I know that you're here to earn, I believe, your government badge, and it seems like when the scout troops come in, they usually pick the most painful, lengthiest meetings that we have, so you're going to get a good dose of county government this evening, but we're so glad you're here. All right, I'm sorry I missed an item, and we want to back up here, and Mr. Holder is going to, at this time, make an appointment to the Development Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Scott McCarter to fill the position that obviously we've just seen Mr. Carter leave. Scott is a former Chairman of the Zoning Advisory Board, so he does have some experience in this type operation. So with that, I nominate Scott McCarter, Madam Chair.
We have a motion on the floor to nominate Mr. Scott McCarter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting the local legislative delegation to introduce a local law authorizing Henry County to have redevelopment powers pursuant to the redevelopment powers law and for other purposes. Our presenter is Mr. Bob White, Executive Director of the Development Authority, and that's handout number one. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Thank you for amending your agenda today to allow us to present this item to you, and also for arranging the agenda so I could speak early in that and go over to the reception for Mr. Carter. As you all know, the one outcome of the past two intergovernmental retreats and the one Henry economic development strategy that emerged from these sessions was an agreement that Henry County needed to pursue the ability to utilize tax allocation district financing as an economic development tool for Henry County. As you learned from these sessions, tax increment financing, which is known as tax allocation district financing, or TADS in Georgia, is an all-purpose economic development tool that is already used in the majority of states to finance public infrastructure that is underdeveloped or economically depressed areas within cities and counties. TADS encourage public-private partnerships, encourage smart growth, and generate new development within cities and counties without raising taxes. While tax increment financing originated in California many years ago, our state's redevelopment powers law, which governs TADS in Georgia, was enacted more than 20 years ago, and today there are more than 21 active TADS in metropolitan Atlanta and throughout Georgia, and the most well-known of these being the Atlantic Station project in Atlanta. Made possible by the creation of a tax allocation district, this formerly abandoned Atlantic Steel Mill Brownfield site, which had laid dormant for many years due to the extensive and ultimately extremely expensive environmental remediation needed to make the site viable for development, was developed into what has become the poster child for successful mixed-use urban TADS. When the Atlantic Station TAD was created in 1999, the tax increment base, which was the value of the property before the redevelopment, was $7.1 million. By 2006, the assessed value of the same property was nearly $265 million. Local governments continue to receive the property taxes based on the underdeveloped site's value, while the additional tax revenues, or the tax increment, are captured to pay back bonds issued for environmental remediation and for site development, design, and construction of public utilities, parking, streets, and sidewalks. Today, that project consists of 2.9 million square feet of mixed-use development, 528,000 square feet of office, a 100-room hotel, over 1 million square feet of retail, and some 1,600 housing units, and many hundreds of new jobs. But for the presence of the TAD, this would still be an underdeveloped, blighted, former steel mill site. The process of pursuing the ability to utilize tax allocation district financing in Henry County begins here tonight with you, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County. You have before you a draft resolution asking the Henry County Legislative Delegation to introduce local legislation authorizing a local referendum that would allow for the citizens of Henry County to have a vote as to whether Henry County should have redevelopment powers as authorized by the Georgia Constitution and subsequent enabling legislation. Your vote tonight does not create TADS. It only begins the process as required by state law. If the legislation is introduced and passes in this session of the Georgia General Assembly, then the ballot item will be voted on by the citizens of Henry County. If approved by our voters, then public hearings will be mandated for the development of a redevelopment plan with you, the Board of Commissioners, who will have an opportunity to approve, reject, or modify before the first tax allocation district can be formed. So in closing, let me state again that this initiative was an outcome of Henry County's two intergovernmental retreats. It is something that you, our municipal leaders, and other groups, including the Henry County Chamber of Commerce and Henry County Development Authority, have endorsed, and we ask for your approval of the resolution to be introduced to the Henry County Legislative Delegation for their consideration and action. Thank you for consideration, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments you have at this time.
Any board member have a question or comment at this time? Mr. Bowman?
On page one of the bill to be enacted, I don't know if you've got that page, ma'am. If you turn to that, and Senate's number 34, it states, "Shall the act be approved which authorizes Henry County to exercise redevelopment powers under the redevelopment powers law as it may be amended from time to time?" It's yes and no. Is that how it will be listed on the ballot?
That is my understanding. That is the wording of it. It's a simple question for a somewhat complex issue, but that's my understanding, yes.
And it's the vote of yes or no. So it will be voted on by the citizens, which gives them an excellent opportunity to say, yes, we want to do this, or no, we don't.
Absolutely. There would be a public information opportunity, there would be hearings if they do vote to approve that. So this, again, is the beginning of the process and not the end.
That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, if not, there's a resolution before you requesting the local legislative delegation of Henry County to introduce a local law authorizing Henry County to have redevelopment powers pursuant to the redevelopment powers law and for other purposes, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We'll take our leave now, several of my board members are here as well, so if you'll excuse us, we're going to the reception.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution setting the qualifying fees for elected county offices for 2010, and that's handout number two. Our presenter is Ms. Janet Shellnut. Good evening.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, this resolution is a fairly simple one. It's just setting the qualifying fees for the 2010 elections. It's 3% of the base salary. All of the county-elected officials are on the resolution. Anybody within the state qualifies there. So have you got any questions?
Any questions or comments from board members? All right, if not, there's a resolution before you setting the qualifying fees, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, the next few items are under public safety, and the first item would be resolution requesting authorization to accept a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Our presenter is Major Danny Butler of the Police Department. That's exhibit number one. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. The first resolution is a request to accept a grant in the amount of $185,125 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Initially, when we proposed this grant to Chairman Mathis, we advised her there was a 25% match, but through the creative negotiations by Kimberly Modus with the Justice Department, there is no longer a match. The funds are covered completely, and there's no cost to the county for this grant, and we would request at this time that the Board accept this money.
Any questions or comments from board members pertaining to this item? All right, if not, there's a resolution before you accepting the grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and I'll entertain a motion. Thank you for consideration, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments you have at this time.
Any board member have a question or comment at this time? Mr. Bowman?
Yes, sir. On page one of the bill to be enacted, I don't know if you've got that page, ma'am. If you turn to that, and Senate's number thirty-four, it states, "Shall the act be approved, which authorizes Henry County to exercise redevelopment powers under the redevelopment powers law, as it may be amended from time to time?" It's yes and no. Is that how it will be listed on the ballot?
That is my understanding, that is the wording of it. It's a simple question for a somewhat complex issue, but that's my understanding, yes.
And it's a vote of yes or no, so it will be voted on by the citizens, which gives them an excellent opportunity to say, yes, we want to do this, or no, we don't.
Absolutely. There would be a public information opportunity, there would be hearings if they do vote to approve that, so this, again, is the beginning of the process and not the end.
That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments from board members? All right, if not, there's a resolution before you requesting the local legislative delegation of Henry County to introduce a local law authorizing Henry County to have redevelopment powers pursuant to the redevelopment powers law and for other purposes, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. We'll take our leave now, several of my board members are here as well, so if you'll excuse us, we're going to the reception.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution setting the qualifying fees for elected county offices for 2010, and that's handout number two. Our presenter is Ms. Janet Shellnut. Good evening.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, this resolution is a fairly simple one, it's just setting the qualifying fees for the 2010 elections. It's three percent of the base salary. All of the county-elected officials are on the resolution. Anybody within the state qualifies there. So have you got any questions?
Any questions or comments from board members? All right, if not, there's a resolution before you setting the qualifying fees, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right, the next few items are under public safety, and the first item would be resolution requesting authorization to accept a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Our presenter is Major Danny Butler of the Police Department, that's exhibit number one. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. The first resolution is a request to accept a grant in the amount of $185,125 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Initially, when we proposed this grant to Chairman Mathis, we advised her there was a 25% match, but through the creative negotiations by Kimberly Modus with the Justice Department, there is no longer a match. The funds are covered completely, and there's no cost to the county for this grant, and we would request at this time that the board accept this money.
Any questions or comments from board members pertaining to this item? All right, if not, there's a resolution before you accepting the grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Jeffries, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to purchase vehicles for the Police Department, and that's exhibit number two.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, the Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase new vehicles for the Narcotics Division. If authorized, the department would like to replace the existing narcotics fleet of fifteen vehicles with fifteen new vehicles, and after such purchase, trade twenty-two vehicles with the assistance of Henderson's Auto World. It is estimated that the purchase will be approximately $156,000, and the trade-in will net $136,000. Therefore, we're requesting an approximate $20,000 to be used from the federal state asset forfeiture account.
Any questions or comments from board members pertaining to this item?
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Now, Mr. Bowman, have a question?
Okay, I just had one quick question. Danny, this, excuse me, Major Butler, this, we're buying, is this for undercover?
Yes, sir.
And we're buying used vehicles, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because when you mentioned we're buying new vehicles, I...
Well, the auction may produce some new vehicles that came from a car lot that turned them into the auction, but for the most part, they'd been used vehicles.
Just the same thing we've done in the past?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have, just wanted to clarify.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept a grant from, I guess, from Target.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Target approached the department with an award of funds under their grant program and asked what we would use it for. We identified a video evidence capture system, and they presented the department with $2,500 for the purchase of the system. The department is requesting authorization to accept these funds for the purchase of the system.
Any questions or comments on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the grant.
Move to approve.
Boy, everybody's quick to make a motion to accept those grants. I have a motion by Mr. Bazler, and a second by Mr. Stamey. Okay, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, the final item under public safety is a resolution requesting an award of a bid to purchase and install an automated license plate recognition system, and that's going to be exhibit number four.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, the department was authorized to accept $23,399 from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Formula Program, which was identified for the purchase of a licensed plate recognition system. Bids were sent out, and after reviewing five bids, it was decided to recommend the award to the low bidder, Plate Scan, as the provider. It's requested that the board authorize the award bid in the amount of $23,450, of which there's a $96 difference, and authorize those funds to be paid from the federal and state asset forfeiture account.
Any questions or comments on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeffries, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works, a public hearing to request the abandonment of a portion of Rustic Road. Mr. Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, is our presenter, exhibit number five. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Board Members. Tonight, we're requesting the abandonment of a section of Rustic Road. Try to explain why we're requesting this. The section that we're asking to abandon runs over a dam is actually, the road is built on top of a dam. Went back and did our research, and our research shows that we don't have right-of-way in this section of roadway. We have a prescriptive easement, did a title search, and indeed, that confirmed that we didn't have any right-of-way. The problem with this is that the dam is in need of repair. The, I would call it the conduit or the conveyance system that controls the normal level of the pond has failed, and that inlet or that control device has rusted away and fell over, thus causing the lake normally to go down to whatever level the riser pipe or standpipe broke. One of the owners of the property has capped that on the outlet end, which has caused this lake to fill above the normal pool level. Normally, a lake fills up to a level that's about one foot below the emergency spillway. In the case that you have an outstanding rain or a big enough rain and the normal conveyance system doesn't handle it, the elevation of the water rises and it goes out the emergency spillway. Since that's been taken out, the water has rose to the emergency spillway level, in this case, which is a single 24-inch pipe, and it's flowing through that. Our problem with that is that pipe is not really large enough to convey a large storm event. If we get a large storm event, water overtops the dam, which overtops the road, which can be quite a problem. In addition, the dam hasn't been properly maintained through the years, there's trees growing on the dam. By that structure being capped at the end, there's been pressure put on that through pipe, very possibly allowing water, and it wasn't built for it to have pressure on it, it was just like an open flow. Because of that pressure, it's leaking, so I'm not quite sure how long that dam will be here or the condition of it. We've had complaints from the residents, of course, with water overtopping the road. By the water level being higher than it should be, too, that brings the water closer to the edge of pavement, making it a little bit of a safety issue in the degree if somebody ran off the road, they could possibly go into the lake. Trying to put guardrail or something like that on this dam would be something I would be scared to do. I'd be real apprehensive about going out there and driving a bunch of posts in this dam. I'm just not quite sure it would take that. So our options become either leave it alone, knowing its problem, repair, and I'll go over that in a second, or abandon this section of roadway. We have elected to recommend abandoning this section of roadway because it really doesn't play a major link in our transportation system. Rather than spend this to put the dam, the conveyance system, the roadway back as it should be and handle the water property, we estimate it costs somewhere near $100,000 to do this repair work. And we don't, the dam is really not ours. We're operating a public roadway on top of a dam that belongs to a private individual, although we have a prescriptive easement, public has used the road, and we have the responsibility maintaining that road. We really don't own that dam. But if the road, I mean, if the dam failed, in order to put our road back, we'd probably have to rebuild that whole structure. So because of those issues, we feel like the best thing to do is abandon it, and we would like to place cul-de-sacs on each side of this dam where the public could turn around and wouldn't be turning around in people's driveways, or emergency vehicles had to come down the road, they'd certainly have an opportunity to turn around, you know, without having to, trying to back up or anything like that. Be happy to answer any questions or comments. We have advertised this properly in the paper, we've sent out letters to the property owners along Rustic Road, and we've met with the property owners on both sides of the dam, the owner of the dam and the property owners on the, what I'd call on the north side of the road as well.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Bowman?
A couple of things, Terry. We've met out there on a number of occasions, and only once, I guess, we've seen water actually just slipping over the road, but I've been called on a number of occasions by people that live in the area and said that water was freely running over the road, and it does come up within, what you say, maybe four or five inches from getting to where it would run over the road, maybe eight at the most, in some places, not all the way across the dam. That, the fact that there would be some significant planing, it's, what do you figure the drop is on the opposite side of the dam? Maybe 12 feet, 14 feet?
I'd say between 12, 14, maybe in the deepest part, right at the creek channel, maybe 15, but an easy 12.
Right, so in order for you, if, you know, I don't know that $100,000 would do it if you had to take the dam back and put it back, in order to put what you'd have to put in there to make that piece of roadway safe. So I've talked to a number of residents, I've got, you know, I've got some for and some against, but I mean, you know, at the end of the day, we've got a, we've got a liability that we need to take a really strong look at, and if we don't do something about it, we would be deemed negligent should something happen and a car run off, flip upside down, somebody get hurt, simply because we hadn't been able to do anything, you know, with a dam that we don't own, with a road being paved. You know, that's a dirt road a long time ago, and we just, we went down through there paving, and we just paved right over somebody's dam. I don't know that that was really a good idea, but at the time, there probably wasn't that many cars in Henry County, much less a day going over it, so. But anyhow, those are, those are some of the things. Now, your estimated cost of $100,000 is, is that, is that, are you pretty tight on that, or is that just a guess? Just, I mean, is that an estimate, a budget guess?
Yes, sir, it's a guess. I have not, as far as like, estimated the quantity of dirt.
Right.
We do know to put the drainage structure in there to convey the 100-year event, we did some hard numbers on it, it's 50,000. I've seen some farm pond dams built, but this, of course, is a little more extravagant than that for, about this size, for in the range of 30, 40,000, so I put 50 on it, but...
The reason I asked that, Terry, was that if we did take that on, I think it would, it would run more money, because we'd have to take it down and bring it up, right? And then, in doing so, we'd have to get some slopes taken care of, or we could get some guardrail on it. So I think it would be, at the end of the day, it'd be considerable more than that. What, what is your thoughts, and what would it cost to do the cul-de-sacs? I mean, do you have a budget number on doing the two cul-de-sacs?
With no land acquisition, I'm sure we could be in the neighborhood of $10,000 would do that very, very easily, I would think.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments from board members? If not, this is a public hearing to request the abandonment of a portion of Rustic Road, and therefore, I'm going to open it up for public comment at this time. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to this abandonment? All right, if you would, one by one, whoever runs to the podium first, I guess, step up and give us your name. All right, my clock's not working.
My name is John Gilbert, I've lived on Rustic Road for about 25 years, and I'm one of the few people, I guess, in Henry County that actually work, live, and worship in Henry County. And I first became aware of this situation when I was speaking with Mr. Bowman, and he made it aware, made me aware of this. And anyway, I called the Henry County Department of Transportation, talked to, I believe, a lady named Janice?
Janet.
Janet, Janet, and she told me, she said, "Well, it's going to be abandoned, it's pretty much a foregone conclusion." And I said, "Well, if it's a foregone conclusion, why are we having this hearing?" And she said, I said, "Well, I work for ESPN Television," I said, "So can I quote you on our news briefing?" "Oh, no, no, it's not a foregone conclusion," so we're kind of getting, playing ping-pong with both hands, and so I don't really know what the deal is. But anyway, I was on the, I was on the telephone as I was coming up here at, let's see, at 5:52 with my insurance agent, who's telling, it is from the fire department on Old Conyers Road. If you go down Brown Road to Rustic Road, it's 1.8 miles to my house. If that's abandoned, now the fire trucks have to go down Old Conyers to Pinehurst, Pinehurst to Brown, Brown to Rustic Road, a distance of 2.3 miles. It's a half-mile difference, okay? My insurance rates are going to go up on my house, because, you know, obviously, I'm farther away from the fire department. And, you know, at a time, if, heaven forbid, my house should ever catch fire, you know, if, you know, a half-mile difference, and I'm burning up in my house, and somebody knocks on the window and says, "They're only a half-mile from here now," you know, when seconds count, you know, that's, that's going to be a tough thing. It's interesting to me how school buses were not allowed to go on the old bridge on Flat Rock Road until it was replaced, and we were glad it's replaced, and, but school buses are allowed to go across the dam, so that's kind of odd to me, why that is. Also, it's, we're now getting a light there at Flat Rock and 42, and with the new bridge on Flat Rock, it makes it very easy to move around our community. And as far as the road being rarely ever used, it's about 500 cars a day run on that road, plus school buses, trucks, I've seen semis, I've seen a lot of big trucks on that road as well. As far as to answer some of the questions for Mr. McMichael, somebody driving into the pond, I call it a pond, to me, a lake is something you put a boat on and go water skiing, you can't do that on this. There's a row of trees, as he said, on the embankment there, you'd have to get a bulldozer, push the trees aside, then go into the lake. And as far as the drop-off on the other side, I've, there are plenty of roads in this county where there are drop-offs on either side, there are no guardrails and that kind of thing. A lot, I couldn't even begin to tell you all those different roads. But anyway, insurance, movability about the community, we've seen, in the 25 years that I've been there, we've seen water come over the top of the dam several times. My kids and I would go out there, and we would take our shoes off, and we'd wade through it. It's only about an inch deep. Yeah, that may not be safe to drive a car through, but we get out, it's 70, 75 feet wide. So it's coming over an inch or two, it's not like it's a torrent in one spot, and, but, you know, if we can replace that bridge on Flat Rock for probably over $1 million, what's $100,000? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Next, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Monroe Craig. I live at 247 Redwood Valley Road, which is, my property is on Rustic Road and Redwood Valley on the corner, by the site we're referring to on Rustic. I've been driving that road for 33 years, that's how long I've owned the property and lived there. I've been driving a yellow school bus for the last 10 years, Henry County bus, over the same road. In my recollection of 33 years, I remember one vehicle that almost went in the lake, of course, the brush and trees stopped him, so I don't know that being that bad, but I wondered if anybody bothered to contact the owner of the property and question, and see if he wouldn't be willing to do the same thing that happened to my property. Holly Baysmore owned the property, and the family is across the road from me, and he deeded the property over to the county so that they might maintain the highway. So as I look across the dam, I look at the post over there showing where now the county owns what had formerly been my property, and it's a very wise thing to do, and I wondered if the county had looked at that owner wanting to donate that property to the county so that it would be maintained properly. In the 33 years I've lived at that location, I have a dam, obviously, nobody's bothered to put up a right-of-way, or, I mean, a guardrail either side, and mine is quite deep off of either side, I think 15-foot of water on my side, and the other side is really a deep hole. Nobody ever brought forth any offers to put crossing rails up there to protect the public. I've had to fight the county road gang from cutting down the trees or bushes that grow up on my side. They sort of block a car from running off in there, and I kind of like to have that up there. But in the past, the county cut it right down and left the water bare for a car perhaps to run off in there. So I wonder why one place needs guardrails to protect it, whereas that deep place I've lived on, no mention of guardrails to save anybody. I would like to see the county investigate the possibility of acquiring that property as a gift and deed it over to the county and not do that. My family lives up at the other end. For 23 years, my son and daughter live right up the road from us, but now we won't be able to visit like normal. Now we'll have to go back out on 138 and work ourselves away to Flat Rock. And one other point I wanted to look at was in driving the school bus, I would be across 138 near the airport side, delivering my students in the yellow bus. And as I would look across, over those two years that we were barred from driving over Flat Rock Bridge, I would watch tractor-trailers run down through there and go over that bridge that was unsafe for school buses. But we stayed away because we do obey the law as bus drivers. And so then, as time went by, we finally got to use the bridge again. So why wouldn't we repair this one? I thought there was a code that you had to show before you could just close a road publicly, is to show that it has no use, or that it's not being used by the public. And there's an awful lot of traffic that runs that road that I've observed over the years. And that's about all I have to offer, and thank you for listening to that, okay? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Craig.
I'll do my best, Mr. Gilbert, and less articulate.
My name is Charles A. Stoner, and I live on Rustic. And...
My name is Charles A. Stoner, and I live on Rustic. And we, we've been delighted since the improvement at the Flat Rock one thirty-eight intersection with the new light, which, if you've ever tried to cross one thirty-eight in, at three thirty or so in the afternoon, up until six or whatever, it's been a dangerous proposition to get across because of the traffic from both ways. And so, we're just delighted, back over in where I live in Rustic, that now we can get on one thirty-eight without going to Brown Road, but we can, we've got us a red light that will allow us safe access to one thirty-eight or Miller's Mill. I've lived there ten years, and I have yet to see the water across the dam. I've seen it right at it, but I haven't seen it cross it, maybe because I didn't drive down there during a torrent. But it would be a major inconvenience to we who live on Rustic as far as if we want to go east on one thirty-eight, and not nearly as safe because of the new red light that we're going to lose the advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoner. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the road closing?
Madam Chair, my name is Ray Scott. I have driven Rustic Road now for thirty-nine years. I have seen quite a bit of water come over that dam. But until recently, I had no idea that it was unsafe. I understand there was a neighbor who complained about it, and he is a neighbor who would benefit most if that pond was drained. When we think about property, I've got eleven hundred feet on Rustic Road, is the county going to address the drop in value of the land when they send my tax bill next, next year? I think not. Building the cul-de-sacs, I was told by Ms. Janet that was going to be free. County workers were going to build those things. The county workers work for free, I wonder. She said, "Oh, no, that's not the problem. It'll be done." But what's going to happen in the future, when you look at the tax records, that little piece of land right there, the taxes have not been paid on it for fifty years. Does the county have no jurisdiction over that? Think about it. There's not a whole lot to say in opposition to it. So, I'll let y'all make up your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Have about five minutes left. Is there any other citizen who wishes to speak in opposition to this? If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Michelle Craig. I live at three forty-one Flat Rock Road. We're actually on the corner of Flat Rock and Rustic. In addition to some of the things that they have said, a couple of things that have come to mind for me, you know, that's a lot of wood frontage. And if there are cul-de-sacs, basically a dead end, you know, we already get people dumping their trash, their sofas, their mattresses. If it's a dead end where you can't have any oncoming traffic to catch you, that's only going to add to that. Also, you know, if, you know, teenage kids find out, you know, there's a dead end right at the woods, that could, you know, that could be loitering. You know, they could go down there to hang out, and that could be, you know, cause the crime to go up. We've been there twenty-three years, and I just wish that, you know, y'all would think about not, you know, abandoning the road.
Thank you. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Elizabeth Daniel. I do not live in Henry County. I came to represent my son, who owns the property there, three forty-six Rustic. He wanted to speak, but he's in Iraq right now. And he wanted me to come to say he does not want that road abandoned. And when we had the September rains, where we were having floods everywhere, it is so amazing, I kept asking, "Has the lake come up yet? Has the lake come over the road? Has flooded yet?" Because of the drought that we had been under for so many years, when that lake filled up, it filled up, but it did not run over that road. And he asked me to come and say that he does not want the road abandoned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Which piece of property does your son own?
The three forty-six Rustic is right on the corner where the lake is.
The brick house there beside the lake? Does he own the lake?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
We have about three minutes left. If there's any other citizen who wishes to speak in opposition to this request. If not, at this time, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the closing of Rustic Road? Let the record reflect, there is not. At this time, are there any questions from board members or comments?
First of all, the lady that's son is in Iraq, I want to thank you for your son's service to our country. I think it's very important that we do that. The other thing is, is that we've tried to get someone to cut that pipe down to allow that spill, let the lake down where it should be, haven't we, Terry?
There was some discussions with a prior property owner, I think prior to this gentleman on the property. I don't...
Is she still in the audience? Ma'am, would you mind coming to the podium, please? I want to ask some questions.
The, the pipe that controls the height of the dam, there's no way to control it now because that pipe has rusted off and broke off. And what normally, on a riser pipe, the water falls in it, comes through, and then goes out, a horizontal pipe. Well, the horizontal pipe is the one that's plugged. So, to put the lake back down at normal pool, that riser pipe would have to be repaired. And then, and it would control the level of the lake and the cap taking off that outlet's wrench.
Okay. Would your son be willing to make those repairs?
He had had someone out looking at it about a year ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And I can't recall what he did or what he was planning to do with it, but he has been trying to work on it. I don't know whether to keep water in it or keep it from overflowing. I've never known it to overflow from the times I've been there.
Well, we've gotten several calls. I went out one time, and like the gentleman, one of the gentlemen stated it was an inch or two inch. I think Mr. Gilbert might have been the one that said that, you know, inch or two inches. I, I seen several inches over the road, and, and I think that's probably enough to make a car hydroplane. And I never dreamed it would run into the lake with all the trees on it. I was afraid it'd run off the other side of the lake that's twelve to fifteen foot deep. And so, that was an issue. The other issue is the fact that, you know, somebody's going to, would have to deed it over to us. Now, looking, what I'm looking at, I've got, I've got citizens lived there for thirty-nine years, twenty-three years, twenty-five years, oh, and it's a couple others. I wrote a lot of notes on here, so I can't read every one of them. But I, I do, I do understand. I mean, I, what I'm looking at is, I'm trying to come up with some way that we can, you know, that we can make it good for everybody. But if, if, you know, you, her son owns the dam, right? So, we don't own the dam, number one. So, somebody's going to have, you know, we're not really interested in buying it. So, you know, I'll just put that out now, and if everybody gets mad at me, they get mad at me, but we ain't interested in buying the dam. But on the same token, that dam would have to be made, that spill, that, that pipe would have to be repaired, and it would have to be put in good working order, in my opinion. I don't speak for the entire board, I'm speaking just for myself, because I am the commissioner of the fourth district, that, that's the only way now that I would entertain not closing the road. That has to be repaired. It, it has to be made safe because there is times when it gets up over the road. I know, and I've heard all the arguments about the, or discussions about the school buses running over. Just because they run over them don't make it right that they're running over. And the fact remains that the dam may or may not be in the greatest of condition, and we're going to be taking responsibility of it if we accept it. So, there's some issues there that we really need to discuss and really need to take care of, so.
Well, let me do this, then. If you get in touch with him, can we postpone it? Can we postpone making the decision so I can at least talk to him, because that's what I've been doing, writing.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we're going to have to do that, to allow you to have an opportunity to, to make contact with your son and tell him that, that spillway pipe is the reason we're having the conversation now, because it would have never went, it never overflowed if, if we hadn't had that issue. It doesn't get up over it all the time. I'm, I'm, I'm well aware that it doesn't do it. I, I go up and down the road a lot myself, so. But on the same token, we're going to need to get with you, and I don't know which way we need to do that, Madam Chair, what we need to do, but to give it an opportunity for her to get with her son and find out if he's willing to do the repairs. And that's, that's going to be the kicker for me, because I, you know, the dam has to be made, we have to make it safe. And so, there are some other issues that we, the county, are going to have to do. And, you know, on the same side of that, there's, you know, there's, I understand everybody's paying taxes, I understand that. Hey, I pay a lot of them myself. On the same token, you know, we're asking two hundred thousand other taxpayers to step up and foot a bill on something that may or may not work. So, I would like for you to, if, if you don't mind, if, how much time would you need for that to, to get in touch with your son? Would, would two weeks be enough time?
Yes, that's plenty, yes.
Could we put this on the, on another, on another agenda?
Do that.
The hearing?
Ms. Wiley, will, will this satisfy the public hearing portion so that we bring it back two weeks from now on the agenda? We can pick up from this point forward?
That, I don't know, Chairman. I probably would act on the side of caution and re-advertise it.
Well, let's just move it out for a month. That'll put, we don't really need to bring it in on a day meeting, because others are going to want to attend. So, let's make sure that we, if we put it out for the thirty days for the next night meeting, is that doable?
Do you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things I want to ask Ms. Daniel, Ms. Daniel, do you have a power of attorney?
Yes.
For your son, okay.
It, it may take him a little while to get some cause testament on doing that. And I know before I would commit to that, I'd certainly want to know what it would cause.
No, I don't have any problem moving it out for sixty days to give him plenty of time to get it. I mean, it's been there in that condition for the longest person, I believe, is our boy scout guy, that's Mr. Scott. And that was thirty-nine years. I think he's may have been there the longest. So, I don't think sixty days will kill us. So, if I could, yes, sir.
How long has this, has, we've been operating, operating a road across this dam? Terry, do you have any idea?
This problem has been around, I'm going to say, if you go back through that Rustic Road file, this problem's been lingering for ten or twelve years.
I'm not concerned about the problem. I'm concerned about how long has it been a paved road across this dam that we don't own it?
Or a road, not necessarily a paved road, but a road.
I mean, he's, he's alluding to, or saying thirty-nine years. I mean, it's obvious that it's been a long time.
I don't, I'm not sure when it got paved, but I, I know it's been over fifteen years ago.
Yes, sir. Well, I would...
The county was incorporated in eighteen twenty-one, I believe, so the road probably was there then.
Well...
We've got a lot of those in the county.
I tend to agree with, with Mr. Bowman. I would like to be sure we look at all the options before we just, I mean, before we build the cul-de-sacs and abandon the road. I personally would like to know how much it's going to cost to build the cul-de-sacs, and the property we've got to acquire doing that faces what we're going to be faced with against, what we have to do with this dam.
Make a motion to table it until all the information is gathered on cost. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bowman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowser, all in favor. Motion carries five Z. Row.
I'll give him several hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
We, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
I'd be happy to give several hundred dollars on my behalf as far as to make a repair.
If you, I think it'd be why, you know, if you'd like to speak with a lady whose son owns it, that would be, you know, that would be fine. I think that, you know, it, it's a community issue, because the community is used. So, if you guys could do that and do some help, I think it'd be, I think it'd be good, because he's in Iraq serving his country. It's going to be kind of hard for him to figure it out. Sir?
I'll spend a Saturday out there.
No, it's fine.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item is, and that will be re-advertised for the, a future meeting once all that information is gathered by the county. The next item under Public Works is a resolution requesting approval of a change order for the McDonough Parkway Extension Project, and that's going to be exhibit number six.
Chairman, here, we are asking to, for a, really a, a change order to do the design on Henry Parkway Connector, which would take our present road where it ends headed toward the DOT Yard and tying it in with twenty eighty-one, and then, of course, lining it up with McDonough Parkway, as well as making some improvements on, on twenty eighty-one. Reason for this additional work, this request, was when, kind of, a little history here. The original project, we were going to connect this roadway to the west side of our DOT building. After looking at that, tying it into that existing McDonough Parkway between the bank and the VP station, we found we had some buried gas tanks and very close right-of-way issues with the bank, as well as some alignment problems on that section of McDonough Parkway north of twenty eighty-one. So, we came before the board, and we said we think it would be much better to relocate that intersection on the other side of the DOT building and fix some of those curves, and we did make a change order at that point. So, at that time, we redid the alignment where we stayed off of all of the DOT buildings, the yard, and we put a, kind of a big curve in the road, and we really avoided all the, all the DOT Yard Transit Building. Our original alignment went through the existing Transit Building. So, we started our roadway design on that alignment. And that was just simply based on the fact of staying off of some of the impacts to the DOT Yard. After working on that alignment for a considerable while, we went to Georgia to the EPD. We found out that the landfill issue, crossing the landfill issue, some of the requirements that they had. We also got some estimates on the cost of what it would cost to dig out the old landfill and haul it off to another appropriate landfill. The cost of doing that, we soon discovered that the alignment really added to the cost of that road, because that new alignment, or that alignment change would impact a lot more of the landfill. So, if we went back to, back to the original alignment, which if you rode up through there where our gate is now, that road up to there, it's, there's an existing road between the landfills, and there's cells on each side. If we put the road back on top of that, we have less impact or less garbage to remove. The only problem with that was when we go back on that original alignment, we would go down through the DOT Yard, and originally, we would impact the Transit Building. But we tweaked that enough where we can miss the Transit Building, but it still kind of splits the DOT Yard. We think in the, in the bigger picture of life, that that impact is certainly a lot more agreeable than the cost that it will be to remove a much larger section of that landfill. That, the old alignment, if you will, still impacted yard, but not as much. If we, we can so arrange our DOT Yard where we have a lot of the storage type stuff on one side and leave all of our facilities, our offices, the sign shop, signal shop, the crew building, the what's now Stormwater Building, all of those will be left intact, and we still can create a yard on the other side. We think that's a much better scenario and get those costs down. So, what this change order does is, we're actually having to almost restart the design process over. So, if we do that, this is a, a request to make those changes, to go back and do that. In addition, while this has been going on, you've probably heard Splosh say this as well, there's been some changes in the... There's been some changes in the erosion control plans that we have to do now that were not in place when we originally started this. Erosion control plans now have to be standalone, they have to be three-phase. There's a lot of changes in those. It also reflects some money changes in there to incorporate that and get that part of it going. I might, just for clarification, so the board will know, this part of the change order is just for the roadway design. We still are looking at some costs that the EPD has brought up about actually getting in the landfill and some things that they want us to do. So there'll be a forthcoming change on that. So I don't, want to make sure you understand, we, this change order is really for the roadway design. We'll probably have another one coming up that'll incorporate what we're gonna have to do in regards to that landfill. We may require some monitoring wells and some different things that we have to, have to put in. Once we kind of drew attention that we're gonna go in there, EPD had a meeting with us and said, "We really think we want y'all to do these things," and they sent us a letter and a list of requirements. And we're working through those now, making sure of what exactly we have to do and the cost and the most efficient way to do that. And I'm not prepared to bring that tonight. But we do want to bring just the change order now for the design services.
Does any board member have a question or comment about this item, Mr. Holder?
Madam Chair, quickly, I'll comment. This original design was one of the reasons that the county, then county manager, brought to the board's attention the need to purchase property to relocate Stormwater and Transit. Is that not correct?
The original one did hit Transit and that's when, and the DOT Crew Building. We voted way out to miss those.
I understand. But the original, when it was first started to be discussed about finding a new home for Transit?
Yes, Transit especially.
That's right.
That's correct.
That's when it all started.
Do we have questions or comments?
We have.
Is this a Splosh project?
No, this, we have, originally this was funded in some BOC money about five years ago, Mike. So this is, we have 1.5 million. We've probably spent a couple hundred thousand on it. It's within the, in that money that's already designated for that project.
So the money is set aside for this, what you're saying?
Yes.
We have the money for it.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you approving the change order services for McDonough Parkway Extension, and I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion, which, which move, for or against? Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Jeffries. Mr. Bowman, you have a question or are you voting?
No, no votes.
Okay, all in favor. Motion carries four zero, and Commissioner Holder had to step out of the room.
Thank you, Board Members.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Moving on under Splosh, our first item is a resolution designating East Lake Road at Union Grove High School as a Splosh III transportation project. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, Splosh Transportation Project Director, Exhibit Number Seven. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. East Lake Road at Union Grove High School is on the Splosh III master list. Funding for this project is available for the county, under the county-wide project schools and bridges budget. There's been a need that identifying the improvements of the intersection at the East Lake and Union Grove School about two years ago, when we started working on the final field plan review for East Lake, the widening, GDOT brought to our attention that we needed to improve this intersection. So we're, we actually started the work on the design under Splosh II, but under Splosh III, we went ahead and include this as a part of the master list. And as all of you are aware, it was not designated on the first round. This is pretty much to designate so we can go ahead and finish the work.
How many questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, Commissioner Stamey, this lies in your district, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of supplement number one for design services for the East Lake Road at Union Grove High School Intersection Improvement Project. That's Exhibit Number Eight.
This is continuation of the one before. Like I mentioned before, we did start the design using our Splosh II funds under the East Lake Extension Project. At that time, about a year and a half ago, when we started the design, the intent was to use county forces to do all the work. But since then, as you all know, Henry County forces are being pretty active with, I think, with all the rain we've been having. So county DOT is being pretty busy. So we have decided to go ahead and finish the design so we can put it out for bid. In order to do that, we have to do certain things to make sure that we can put it out for bid, like make sure we have quantities. The format has to be a specific format, pretty much following GDOT format, versus if we were using county forces, we would not have to be as detailed as we would have to. Funding for this project will be included in the one we just approved. So I'll take any questions at this point.
Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make one clarification. Rocky, the other board members wasn't involved in this one. We had to move some money. But basically, the savings on Keys Carrying 81 and 81 and Bethany, that savings got rolled into this project, correct?
Well, at this point right now, we do have $100,000 that was under the school and bridges section. There was $100,000 left. So at this point, to, for the design purpose, I think we'd have enough money to go ahead and do the design, finish the design. By any additional right-of-way, we're gonna need very minimum right-of-way since the schools are hopefully donated. But, so we're thinking 100,000, we should be able to do the improvements. If we don't, when we put it out for bid, then we'll have to come back and we'll probably use that money from that project. But just to give you a little bit more information on this project, we are gonna be putting some left-turning lanes, also for the middle school, for the high school, and also signaling the high school and where the elementary school comes together.
Good, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, if not, Mr. Stamey, this is in your district, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The next item is a resolution designating the State Route 42 at Harris Drive Intersection Improvement Project as a Splosh III transportation project, and that's gonna be handout number seven.
State Route 42 at Harris Drive is on the Splosh III master list. Funding for this project is currently available under District One budget. If you, if you could look at the spreadsheet. Originally, when all the projects were designated, actually District One designated more projects or more money than the other four districts. So we do have 425,000 still available out of the money that it was supposed to be on hold. And I put it in there, the list of projects that were on hold and reflect in the difference of it.
Rocky, I do have a question for you on this particular intersection. And Mr. Stamey may remember this as well. I believe that at this particular intersection, that there was going to be a contribution of $25,000 from the buns.
Correct, ma'am. That's not included in there. I was aware about that about, I think it was last Friday, actually, yeah, last Friday. Sherri Matthews mentioned that to me, that I think it was a rezoning condition.
It was, it was about three years, three years ago.
So we'll definitely, once this bill, we'll definitely collect that.
Okay, I think sometimes as time goes by, we tend to forget these things. It's important, it's important in these days to try to track every dollar that we can.
That's correct.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Stamey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Jeffries, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. All right, and the final item under Splosh is a resolution requesting approval of a contract with GDOT for acquisition of right-of-way on State Route 42 at Harris Drive. This is handout number eight.
State Route 42 at Harris Drive has been, is gonna be in the list, on the future list of the future stimulus, stage two of stimulus projects. So in order for us to go through with that, we have to acquire right-of-way and we gotta follow the GDOT rules on that. And this resolution states that Henry County agrees to abide by all state and/or federal regulations, rules, laws, guidelines when acquiring all necessary right-of-way and/or easements. And doing so will be legible for that stimulus money.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? All right, if not, Commissioner Holder, I believe this is in your district, and I will entertain a motion. This is item D under Splosh.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Rocky. Next item is a resolution approving a uniform indigent defense verification program in Henry County and authorizing the chairman to execute an agreement with Amorsa Technologies LLC for the provision of online indigency, that's a tongue-twist, for verification services. Our county manager, Mr. Butch Sanders, is the presenter, and that's going to be handout number three.
Good evening. I bring you potentially very positive budget news, which we certainly need in these days. At the behest of and the constant advocacy of public defender Gary Bowman, we have an opportunity to recover three different fees connected to our indigent defense program. We've been working on this now for several weeks. We have obtained the participation of all of our courts, and we have a contract, which is part of this resolution, with Amorsa Technologies, which can do verification services for all of our indigent cases. And that is a necessary prerequisite of retaining those fees. And I would ask for your approval of this contract with Amorsa. Gary has already worked with the council to assure that we have been approved to retain these fees. So this just puts a final bow on this program.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? All right, if not, I want to thank Mr. Gary Bowman for bringing this information to the board's attention, to the county manager's attention, and we certainly appreciate you doing that. If there are no questions from the board, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jeffries, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. Please note that Commissioner Bowman has abstained from the vote. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. All right, at this time, the resolution accepting the donation of real property from Tussah Hall Development, we, I believe, did we handle, we've already handled that at the first, at the first meeting that we had. And at this time, I'm going to turn this item over to our vice chairman, Mr. Basler, because I need to make an appointment to the zoning advisory board. My appointee, Ms. Sue Ostrander, will be moving out of Henry County due to a job change her husband has experienced, and so I will need to make a new appointment. And so at this time, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jennifer W. Brown of Riverbend Drive to serve in Sue Ostrander's place. And that will be effective as of March 31st, is that correct? March 31st.
All in favor?
No, you got a second.
I mean, second. Do I?
Second.
Second?
The motion was second.
Motion for second.
Second.
All in favor? How about that?
I believe that motion carried six zero. Thank you. All right, now Mr. Basler voted too. He exercised his right to vote. The next item on the agenda is an appointment by the District Five Commissioner to the Zoning Advisory Board, and that's gonna be handout number six.
Madam Chair, I would like to appoint Thomas Hester to the zoning advisory board.
We have a motion to appoint Thomas Hester. Is there a second?
Vote.
Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. At this time, Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session? Ms. Wiley, any comments? All right, we are moving into our public comments portion of the meeting, and we have three individuals that have signed up for public comments. The way public comment works is that each person can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. The first person I would like to call is Crystal Stovall Dixon, and Ms. Dixon is going to be speaking on the West Campground Road Extension Project. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Stovall Dixon, and I live at 959 Maple Leaf Drive in Winslow at Eagles Landing subdivision. I am here tonight to voice my concern about the West Campground Road Extension Project. This project is a four-lane highway that is proposed to bisect my community and endanger my two sons and all the other children in our neighborhood. The highway is designed for a speed limit of 45 miles per hour, which means that vehicles will actually drive 55 to 60 miles per hour. The projected average daily traffic is 15,000 vehicles per day, every day, including tractor-trailer trucks. For five years, my sons and other children have been able to walk or ride their bikes to our community playground. The only traffic in the community was from the residents, who knew that children were at play, and drove accordingly. If the West Campground Road Extension Project comes to fruition, then all the children will have to cross the four-lane highway with 15,000 vehicles per day speeding by at 55 to 60 miles per hour in order to get to their playground. What parent in this room thinks this scenario is safe for our children? The next question I have is, why would our government representatives grant a developer a building permit to build a single subdivision, knowing that eventually they would bring a road right through the middle of it and bisect the way of life of those that are living there? Why not make the developer modify his site plans to build two different subdivisions right from the start? All of this controversy could have been prevented with a little forethought and wisdom. Are you okay, Mr. Holder?
I'm okay.
According to the Joint Henry County Cities Transportation Plan goals... I guess I said this right here? I don't know if you can see that.
Thank you, Ms. Minon.
But that's the Joint Henry County Cities Transportation Plan, right off the Henry County website. Oh, now I can't read it. But goal number five says to ensure coordination among the planning and development activities of the county. It sees the school districts, the water and sewage authority, and other involved organizations. The fifth goal addresses a major concern of citizens and stakeholders expressed throughout the CTP planning process to better coordinate transportation and land use decisions among the various levels of government and the institutions involved in transportation and development decisions to create better outcomes for its citizens. So not only do the residents of Winslow at Eagles Landing think that there's a lack of coordination among our governmental entities to produce adequate outcomes for its citizens, I think it's safe for me to say that this road project bisecting our neighborhood is a poor outcome for the citizens of Winslow at Eagles Landing. In addition, one of the transportation policies in the Joint Henry County Cities Transportation Plan, which is Policy 1.3.16, the county and cities will ensure that all transportation projects improve safety and neighborhood livability, promote transportation choices, and meet land use objectives. This project is not improving safety for the children of Winslow at Eagles Landing. It is having the opposite effect. It is thrusting them into harm's way. This project is definitely, definitely not increasing neighborhood livability in Winslow at Eagles Landing. It is decreasing our neighborhood livability by bisecting the community. The West Campground Road project is the antithesis of Henry County's own transportation goals and its policies. So my last question is, why are we doing this? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. The next citizen that has signed up for public comment is John Wolfsoorn, and Mr. Wolfsoorn is also speaking on the Campground Road Extension. Good evening, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is John Wolfsoorn. I live at 624 Windham Way in Winslow at Eagles Landing subdivision, with my wife and four children. Again, I obviously want to talk about the Campground Road Extension Project. Two things I want to talk about, one, a couple of the issues, and then another purpose I'll get to at the end. The issue is, again, you've heard many times, in many different ways, I know. And so I don't want to spend a lot of time rehashing this. My main point is that by bringing them up again, is to, again, to show that, you know, the citizens and all the neighbors, my neighbors are very concerned with this project. Again, safety, is, we're very concerned with the proximity of a four-lane road going through our backyards. I've heard within five feet of our backyards, within our fence lines or our property lines, that the road will come up to. The pool issue and the tennis courts, you know, on one side, one neighbor's gonna have to obviously cross this four-lane road to go to the pool, and the other one's gonna have to cross to go to the tennis courts and the play area, as well as the Flippin Elementary being on one side, the neighborhood that will be split and be on the opposite side of the four-lane road will have to cross that road to get to school, unless the bus issue has been addressed. I'm not aware of that. I know there's an issue that they, that certain, some of the people within that area, their bus privileges or bus, buses were taken away with, if you live within a certain distance. And some of those are on the other side of that four-lane road. So unless something's been addressed, they will have to cross that four-lane road to walk to school every day. Health issues are a concern. Studies have shown that the air quality within the proximity to a road like this, there's an increase in asthma, especially in children and elderly, as well as other respiratory problems. We're obviously very concerned with the economic impact it'll have. We think, we're pretty certain that we'll have a decrease in our property values, as well as an increase in foreclosures, which is definitely not good for us, and definitely not good for the county, I think, as a whole, to have that, those things happening within the county. The economic situation, as well as the additional entryway and exit to the neighborhood will increase, have it probably do an increase in crime. I've heard studies that say that, you know, criminals, when they're casing a place to burglar, they'll look, you know, how can they can get in and out quickly? Right now, they can't get in and out quickly. If there's one entrance and one exit, obviously, the people that are close to that entrance might not be good for them, but the rest of the community is, they're back in there. It's a nice, quiet, safe community, and we think that'll lead to that. This is not an exhaustive list of issues, but again, I just bring them before you again to show that we're still very much concerned. We do believe that it'll lead to a major decline in our quality of life of everyone in the community, and it's not something that we expected or anticipated when we purchased our homes. Again, all of this, I know you've heard before. We do hope that the alternatives that have been presented previously are being seriously considered, and one that will not so seriously and negatively impact the lives of everyone in our community. My last purpose, and actually the main, not necessarily the main one, but the reason I wanted to come here and say this, I tried to do it last time and didn't get here in time for the comments last time I was here, I would like to extend an invitation to the board, or anyone involved in the, in the project at all, to my, come to my backyard. When I first heard about the project, the very first time I heard about it in any detail at all, the very first thing I did was I walked back into my backyard and looked at across the wooded area where this road is gonna be. And I could see the houses that are over there and their backyards. And literally, I'm thinking, there is no way. I cannot fathom or picture a four-lane road with a divider in it, and what I've heard is sidewalks to the side, whether they're, that's, whether there's sidewalks or not, I could not, literally cannot picture a four-lane road through there. It would be very, very crammed, therefore leading to much more, you know, concerns about safety and the health and everything else. So my address you have and the phone numbers on the sheet I filled out, serious at any time that anyone would like to come by to, just to look. I mean, just take five minutes to look and just kind of get boots on the ground, look at the, where this road is gonna be. If you haven't already done, I don't know if y'all have been there. I'm not sure if you've seen it from some of the neighbors, from some of the houses and the yards, but please, I invite you to come and just take a look so you can see firsthand where this road's gonna be, and see if you agree with me that, how can you picture this four-lane road going through there in this area? So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. The final citizen that has signed up for public comment is Mr. Robert Hen of Winwood Drive, and he will also be speaking to us on the Campground Road Extension. And you have five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the Board of Commissioners of Henry County. My name is Robert Hen. I live at 1261 Winwood Drive, McDonough. That is a part of Winslow at Eagles Landing subdivision, a quiet pastoral community with only one entrance and exit, composed of quiet, two-lane rural streets where young children can and do, safely play and ride their bicycles and bicycles. Residents enjoy walking, both for health and recreation and to get to our community amenities, the pool and tennis courts. Under the new school transportation rules, many kids in our community live too close to Flippin Elementary School to ride the school bus. Some get rides, some walk to school. At our last meeting, I asked you to explain how your driving the presently planned Campground Road Extension through the heart of our otherwise pastoral community would not devastate the values of our homes. I have not received any answer to that question. I am not surprised. The road as planned will be devastating to the values of our homes. So you have no explanation. When the planners were developing our community, they placed the community pool and kiddie playground right next to a road called variously Campground Road Extension and West Campground Road. All believed this to be a continuation of Campground Road as it then existed. The tennis courts and playfield were planned to be some distance away from the pool and kiddie playground, and on the other side of that road. Henry County reviewed and approved those plans before it was built. We purchased our homes believing that Henry County would not have approved a plan which was unsafe for our 309 families. Now you are planning this road to be a four-lane, 45 mile per hour arterial road, carrying by current estimates between 15,000 and 20,000 cars and trucks each and every day. I and everyone I have talked to in our community believes that locating our community pool and kiddie playground next to a four-lane, 45 mile per hour arterial road, carrying between 15,000 and 20,000 cars and trucks each and every day, presents a grave safety hazard to the kids using this now misnamed amenity. It will also be a hazard to our adults, though not as grave a hazard as it will be to our kids. This planned road separates the pool half of our community from the tennis half. Now our kids, or for that matter, how are our adults, going to safely travel to the so-called amenity located on the other side of the road from them? What we want to understand is how you could possibly think that driving a four-lane, 45 mile per hour arterial road, carrying between 15,000 and 20,000 cars and trucks each and every day, through the heart of our pastoral community, will not create a substantial safety hazard to all in our community, and an especially grave hazard to our kids. This is not a rhetorical question. We want an answer. Please show us the studies you have made, the calculations you have used, the reasoning you have followed, which would give us any hope that what you are planning will not result in great injury to, or even death, to our kids and also our adults, as they are forced to cross a road that does not belong in our community. As before, I will forward a copy of this to each of you to remind you of our questions. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hen. The upcoming meetings and events are Monday, February 1st at 9:00 a.m., a regular workshop meeting, and Tuesday, February 2nd at 9:00 a.m., a regular board meeting. Also, Monday, February 15th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, February 16th at 6:30 p.m., both of these are also regular board meetings. If there are no further items to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Mr. Jeffries. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.